Regularly scheduled meeting of the Newton School Committee. We do have a quite a full agenda to get through this evening. So I will, I will ask all the members to be on point with, with questions and commentary. Let's begin tonight, every night with the pledge of allegiance led by two of our fifth grade students tonight, both from Williams. We have Addie Giraschik and J.C. Reyes. And Principal Byers says that Addie is 11 years old, likes to draw and play soccer. Her birthday was on Easter this year, and she was born on Easter. Fun fact. She's very proud of her rope climbing in PE, which is on point for tonight. Good job, Addie. And does intermediate rock climbing outside of school. J.C. Reyes likes to play football. He is not an Eagles fan. He has confirmed that to me. His favorite subject is PE, so also on point. Well, to go, J.C. Big fan of burgers and fries, aren't we all? And Principal Byers says you should hear him sing. And in fact, he got this gig because he and Addie sang the morning announcements at Williams School. So with that, J.C. and Addie, if you would like to come up to lead us in the pledge, that would be great. There's no obligation to participate, but for all those who are willing and able, please rise.
The floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If there's anything you'd like to share with us, you're welcome to do so.
One thing that's good about our school, Williams, is that it has really nice teachers. Everyone's kind and the subjects are great.
Also, we get to know each other like really well because there isn't that many students.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our public comment tonight. We just have one person for public comment in the room. That is Allison Lebron. If you want to come up, please state your name and address to start. You have three minutes. Emily will give you the two and a half minute warning.
And so I think overall, what I'll do is I'll just briefly summarize, you know, the, the
Respondence indicated that it's effective, that students understand the expectations and that students follow the expectation. So all the respondents, there was eighty-four percent, you know, was the minimum for any of those questions. Middle school staff did indicate that, you know, there is a degree to which students are still distracted somewhat outside of the class and hallways and bathrooms. And so, and middle school staff also identified some areas of potential growth. We used yonder pouches this year, which we were approved at the start of the year. And I just want to, you know, thank our middle school principals for all the work they did with their teams to identify protocols, to utilize the yonder pouches and educate the community and work with our students who initially were not, were not, many of them were not thrilled about the process. But just in the short months that we've had since, since January, when it was implemented, our, our, our school staff and our students have really responded. And, you know, the, the processes we've, you know, the evidence indicates that it's, that it's made a significant impact. And so at this point, I'd love, I'd love some of our middle school principals to share their perspectives and, and what they've observed this year.
I'll start out Jackie Van Principal of FA Day Middle School. We piloted this program the year before last, so the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Our staff continue to love the program. I think that eliminates a lot of the distractions in the classroom. It also eliminates some of the negative interactions that used to happen over cell phones. All the cell phones were off and away. When a student would inevitably, like all of us, have our cell phones close to by, when they go off, they would take a look at it. And that would cause a negative interaction. And for that quick moment, you see it at home in your, in your own households. I'm sure when children are doing their homework and they have their phone next to them, just like that, they're distracted from learning. Our teachers a day are all in favor of it because of that, and I think they want to continue with that program. The students, Jean was talking with all of us about the need to survey students and said, you know, no need to. The first year there were seven hundred students marching at my door with a petition. We love the Action Civics. And inevitably I said, it's because we care about you and we're not changing your mind. This year, it's really interesting. Jean has joined our Student Advisory Council a day. And they're kind of settling in. I see them talking to the incoming fifth graders and saying, you know, it's not so bad. So there's some shift of like, there are adults that care about us and we feel like it takes the pressure off during the day. Jean already referenced the fact that outside of school is still a significant issue for our children. If you watch the dismissal a day and all the other schools, they're frenetic to get at their phones. And it like speaks to an addiction that we can talk to around electronics altogether. A day we've shifted now to focus on Chromebooks, which we go about as well. We've eliminated Chromebooks in the morning because students, what they were doing on their phones, they were finding a way to do on school issued Chromebooks. Because they're much smarter than we are, of course. So it's something that we're focusing now a day. The shift to, you know, they're looking to replace their sort of, their addiction to the phones with Chromebooks. So we're doing some boot camps in sixth grade, talking about this is a Newton Public School issued device and doing some work around that. Just to let students know that we're going to be meaningfully integrating technology. And there are some rules and guidance around that. But overall, the day staff would be happy to report that we want to continue being a cell phone free school. And we really do need the devices to help support that.
John Hertunian at Oak Hill. Thanks, everybody, for letting us come talk tonight. I just want to echo what Jackie was saying. One thing that I wanted, sort of a shout out to the faculty. Our school has like really worked on an off and away policy prior to the yonder pouches coming. And, and it's continued with the yonder pouches. It really takes the whole school community to be really consistent about applying these systems. And so, and that's why it's working. And that's why, again, like kids know, the overwhelming majority of students just know. It's not, you, you, you see a phone, we're taking the phone. And then that's the way it is. And, and it's made it much easier in terms of instruction. And I think, again, just like what Jackie was saying, I think the under pouches is just what we do now. It's like another little piece. It was an extra tool that helped our school. Like in bathrooms, there were some kids that would still try to bring them to the bathroom. Now it's even more difficult with the pouch. So, but again, I think it's, it's enough not, kids not using their phones during the school day.
Kim Lysit, Principal at Brown Middle School. I would echo what my colleagues have said and also add that in January, we started the pouches. We didn't have them at the beginning of the year. And I've noticed for the students, I think we have our bare beliefs and the first bare belief is be here. And I think having the knowledge that they cannot access that phone, even, you know, having it in their locker, they could still go. It was tempting, you know, to go see if someone had texted them. So that's gone. And they don't have to think about that. It's not a distraction for them. And I, the other piece, Jackie said it already, the relationships between teachers and students are, are much more solid because they're not having those, the combat about the phone. I think that's the biggest win for it. I will say it's logistically challenging and we're making it work. But, you know, it's a little bit like TSA at the front door and, you know, can't get by me till you lock it. And not a calculator, it's got to be a phone. But, you know, those are the things that we're, we're working through with kids. And, and most of them have just kind of gone along with it and it's been fine. So.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I didn't introduce myself before. Jean Roundtree, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Ed. So we also did some research at the, the high school level, which is in the, which is also in the memo. I think that it's really important just to establish before we talk about how folks responded to the survey, just the differences in context. And so both of our high schools are open campus schools. They're, you know, much larger buildings. And students have more flexibility in their schedules than in middle school. And so it would be the, you know, any operational process we would put in place to support the policy would have to be different, you know, given the context. And so we, we are not using yonder pouches. We just have an off and away policy. And the expectation is that teachers will ask their students to place their cell phones and cell phone holders that are positioned in the front of the room and that students will not be using cell phones during instructional time. So invite Mr. Greenfield to talk about, you know, the survey results and then we can talk about if anyone has any questions.
Sure. Rob Greenfield, history teacher and digital literacy coordinator, New North High School. I, I think, you know, I think policy implementation like this, I think for us, I can speak to New North, was always downstream from a cultural shift about phone usage. And that, by that, I mean the expectation that, that it's off and away during instructional time. That you come in instructional academic spaces and it's the use of the phone holder. For some special spaces around the building, it would be in the backpacks. But on the whole, I think, anecdotally from staff, and I think in the survey day you see this also, which is that it's been a pretty dramatic positive shift in that direction. That especially with the younger grades, I think there's been a trickle up effect from the middle schools. Your teachers are facing a lot less resistance. Conflict is down. I think that number of teachers that reported that conflict with students was a barrier to implementation was only twenty percent. I thought that number was really low compared to the last couple of years. I think if we surveyed that last year or two years before that, that number would have been a lot higher. And it was making teachers' lives very difficult in that way. And that's what I think teachers feared most. When talking about phones with students was that it was this initial kind of point of conflict. And so I found that to be very, very encouraging. And, you know, talking with teachers, even today, it was, you know, one teacher had talked about that that she actually had to tell everybody to quiet down at the beginning of the class because people were talking to each other. And that was a new experience. And so it was like a privileged experience that she didn't know was a privilege. And so I think there's a lot of really, really good news on that front. I think there was, the working group over the summer talked about this and kind of expected this, that there would be, because it is kind of a daily reminder for students to kind of have that default behavior to put the phone in the phone holder that at some point during the year, there would be a little bit of a lull. And we definitely hit that right in the March, kind of April stretch. And so we tried to reset that this year. And I think, you know, there's more work to be done in that to get consistent usage of the phone holders throughout the year. To continue to assist and embolden teachers to use phone holders. But on the whole, I think it's been, there's been a really positive cultural shift in the right direction.
Yeah. So I think we are pretty unanimous in, in making the recommendation that we continue the policy as written. Just acknowledging that both at the middle school and high school level, we have additional, you know, work we can do to ensure that, you know, all of our staff are, are working arm in arm with consistent practices to uphold the expectation.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Let me start off with a question. Is it, this, this was something we talked about in the working group as we were developing this. And, you know, there were certainly some folks who were of the opinion that we just shouldn't have phones at all within reach of students, you know, in, inside the four walls of the building, middle school or high school. Is that feasible at the high school level? I think that was really what came out of that discussion in the working group last year was, do we have the capacity to really be able to pull that off? And then does that dilute everything else if we have a policy that's not being followed? So can you just share your thoughts on that, having seen us go through this step of the process? A, is that a goal we should be working towards? And B, if it is a goal we should be working towards, how feasible is it?
You should know that the school committees received some emails advocating for bell to bell, no, no devices. So we had a long chat about that, as Chair Bruski said. What does that look like at, at that level?
Yeah, I'll share my perspectives and then I'll invite Mr. Greenfield to, to also share. You know, I think that whenever I'm looking at any policy that, that also kind of lays out how the policy will be upheld and enforced, the first question I ask is, do we have the capacity to actually do that? And I think with the number of, the number of students in the building, the number of students, you know, who may have a free block or, or a study hall. I think we have to be very thoughtful about how we write the policy. Because I, I think kids are, are very observant. They understand the culture of, of school buildings even better than a lot of the adults in the school building. And if we're in the position where we have a policy, you know, that we are either not able to enforce or we, or we don't enforce, you know, that I think erodes the way our students understand all of the expectations that we have for them. So I don't, so I think bell to bell, I think is, is certainly an, an expectation that we can, you know, really encourage. I think, you know, I think that we have to be very thoughtful about, about what those conversations sound like. And ultimately, you know, what, what is the education that we're doing for students to understand, you know, the, the why of it? And I'll give you a couple of examples, you know, for, for why I think we really need to be thoughtful about it. Number one, I think the kids, you know, I've been an educator for twenty-three years or twenty-four years. Kids always find a way to, to always push the envelope of, of whatever we're expecting them to do. An example with the cell phone policy, if you have, if any of our students have MacBooks, you are able to mirror your cell phone on your MacBook, right? And so we encourage students to utilize computers. I mean, we're, I'm in classrooms every week and we, you know, we're in science classrooms and kids are doing labs and they've got spreadsheets. And if they have a MacBook, they're able to literally recreate their phone on their, on their computer, right? And so I don't know that we have the capacity to look over, you know, any student, you know, who is using a MacBook to, over their shoulder to, to see whether or not they're mirroring it. I think what we really have to do is to continue to, to educate the students of, of the why, right? And, and to say that, you know, that our cell phones are, you know, very powerful computers that, that, you know, are in our pockets, but they're also very powerful distractors. And I think that we really have to be thoughtful about how we go about writing a policy to make sure that we can follow up on it as it is written.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that is a, is an ideal scenario. You know, I think that's a worthy goal and I think a lot of teachers would appreciate that. I think, speaking personally, you know, talking about the after school piece to the middle schools where that's immediately where the kids go. As soon as class ends, that's where they're going. And it, you know, it, it takes away a little bit from the conversations that we could have in those five minutes. The kids have in the hallway, trying to check in those five minutes, what did I miss? Did I get a text from mom? You know, what's happening on whatever social media app? And so I do think it's a worthy goal. You know, I think in this, in the case of New North, you know, there's a lot of space around the building. You know, especially on the first floor where kids go for frees, that would require, you know, staffing to have eyes there. You know, if we're going to achieve that, you know, I think, you know, there's, we have a campus aide this year who's been unbelievable in the last two months with this stuff. Shawanda, shout out to Shawanda. She's been, the kids know her immediately. It's, it's the last two months. The kids are like, where is she? They're trying to locate her because she's got. And so, and so, but she's been unbelievable as part of, you know, kind of continuing that cultural shift. And so, you know, I think that, that would be a necessity in that case. And I do think it's a worthy goal to try to get there, just for the social interaction piece between students, students and staff. And again, I know there are a million things that go into that, but I think it's a worthy goal.
I guess I, I just want to put my two cents in that there's a lot of leaving the building, coming back to the building at the high school level during their free blocks. And I think the, the tension will be, and you know, Jackie was out in front on this at day of like those families who want that safety net with their, with their child on the phone. And so I won, I would have to say in response to the challenge to us, bell to bell, how about parents, bell to bell, managing the student access? I used to lock down my kid's phone from the minute they got on the bus to the minute that the bell rang. I wasn't popular, but I wasn't trying to make friends. So that is something that parents can do, that if we're really committed to this, we could hold seminars on how to do that. You can do that for your sixteen, seventeen and eighteen year old because you pay for the phone. Now, of course, some kids may pay for the phone and they may have their own accounts. And that would be something we'd have to contend with. But those are community conversations we could have as Newton community members. So it would be that kind of partnership that would be necessary, I think.
And thank you, because that was going to be my exact next question on the parent and community education piece of this, which we've done a little bit of this year, probably not as much as I, I was hoping we would get to, given some of the other distractions. But, you know, I saw some of that in the teacher feedback. Is, has that been a common theme? You know, kind of as you've been discussing this internally, that we just need more of that and we probably need it, I'm guessing, starting younger?
I was talking with a colleague about this today where that is a big pressure point for kids with logistic, with communication with parents, that they feel, you know, for whatever, they're trying to coordinate after school. And, you know, I think education with students and with staff, but also with parents to maybe think about not necessarily expecting immediate communication back at the high school level, right? Where it's like, I text them within, expecting the text back within, you know, ten, fifteen minutes from a student to, to try to tamp down those expectation, communication, immediate communication, so kids don't feel that pinch. And I think it's, yeah, I think parent engagement on that would be really beneficial, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, that parent and student education is really important. And I think that one of the ways that we can do that is to continue to leverage our partnerships. I'm on the Newton Youth Commission Advisory Board. And I know that, you know, that the subcommittee I'm on is working on a proposal for a parent education event about how to help students make the transition from middle school to high school. And I imagine that an event like that would be a really good opportunity to, you know, to build the shared understanding, you know, of the, of the why of it, to be able to talk about the research that indicates why it's such a good and important thing to do. And just really look at, you know, all the ways and all the spaces that we engage, you know, with our parents, you know, and our students and just building the vision in the Newton Public Schools, you know, that we really limit these type of distractions.
Can I just add, I think we were talking about our PTOs, engaging our PTOs in a, in a parent series. Because quite honestly, it's not really a fair fight out there for parents right now. There's a lot of struggle at home. And we can solve the problems during the day. Really, if you come by day or any one of our schools, they're really, students are kind of frenetic at getting at their phones. And that's very real. And now it's transferring over to Chromebooks. So I don't think it's really just about cell phones, right? This is about how do we support parents? You know, we give children's devices one to one so they can engage in learning and do their homework. And then they go home and there's a power struggle over how they're using it. And so I think we need to bring parents together. They're a little isolated and have an opportunity to talk to each other, share support, bring in speakers to help validate them that what they're doing is the right thing. All of our field trips, most of them anyway, our children don't take their phones. And so, and they're okay. You know, we get ahold of their parents if we need to. I mean, all of us grew up without cell phones. It's just like a, a leap for the parents. Just, I'd like to show them pictures of their children talking to each other, playing games with each other. It's really uplifting and I think we just need to bolster parents. It's really hard for them right now.
The struggle is real. Other questions? Mika and then Anping and Emily.
Thank you. So thank all of you for putting forward the recommendations. I'm wholly in favor of it and have been for quite some time. I think, just turning a little bit, as far as I'm concerned, for me, it's as if our educators, you're not teaching kids what to think. You're teaching kids how to think. And if you liken that approach to teaching these burgeoning adults, young adults, to how to engage with these types of technology devices, that's part of the charge as well. So I think it, it, it's a simple solution, the concept of bell to bell, that may not work for us in the way that, that that simple concept is, is intended. So in terms of educating and making sure that you're, you're building this culture. Two things I wanted to follow up on very quickly. Rob, you mentioned that with some of the younger students at the high school, you're seeing this kind of proof of concepty type thing where they're a little bit more adjusted to the idea of, oh, our phones are away and we can't get to them when we're having instructional time. Would you say that that's something that you're looking to track and see as a progression over the next few years?
Yeah, I, I would say, I taught seniors and sophomores this year and I saw a pretty distinct difference in terms of just the approach with me, with the phones and the policy and the deep, and the kind of classroom routine of putting it in the phone holder. Where it wasn't, you know, outright resistance from the seniors. Like I, I would say a couple of years ago, it would be like a, don't take my property kind of conversation. Where that was, I don't think we're talking about that with the seniors, but where younger kids are a lot more like, okay, here's what we're doing. This is something that we do. This is something we're doing as a district. And they're used to the conversation around it. They're used to the policy around it. They're used to, they kind of know some of the, you know, if I start with, you know, I give teachers a, a, a handout that they can use a lot of the, the data around smartphones and cognition. A lot of the kids have heard it already at that age where it's like they kind of, it's not an eye roll, but it's close, you know, of like, we know this already. And so, you know, I'm interested to see how that looks for them going forward. I haven't, I haven't thought exactly about how to track that for sophomores through high school or freshmen through high school, anything like that. But, you know, I certainly want to keep an eye on it.
Thank you. And real quick for Kim, follow up on, you said you started in January Brown, right? So logistical challenges, which I'm aware that there's the bottleneck at the scrum at the start and then the scrum at the end. We're locking and unlocking the phones. Have you seen that that's improved since January to now? That the ease and the facility of doing it has gotten better?
Yeah, it, it's definitely gotten better. Once they figured out it will go as quickly as they go. You know, so when they come in, they're ready, they have it and now they click it. It's, it's much smoother than at the beginning when they had to put their backpack down, find their yonder, you know? That whole part of it is much better. It was never a problem leaving. We have ten magnets and it takes, like, they are fast to get those phones out. So that's, that's not been a problem. It's more, I've got, at Brown, at least we have three entrances. So I have to have like two adults at each of the entrances, ready from seven thirty to eight twenty, basically. So.
One other thing, just to build on what Kim was saying, and I know that, you know, that, I know we've had a lot of conversation about the budget. But the, our leaders have had to use, you know, utilize, you know, stipends and other, you know, creative staffing approaches to make sure that we have the number of, you know, hands on deck, you know, in the, in the moments before the start of the school day and at the end of the school day. And so I think as we, you know, hopefully commit to continuing the policy as written, that we also think about, you know, that the, you know, policy does also require, you know, operational support to do, to do effectively.
Thanks, Tamika. Anping and then Emily.
Thank you. I'm very happy to hear that the majority of feedback is very positive. And I assume that middle school seems probably a little bit more easier to manage. And I'm glad John, you mentioned that your school started even earlier, before we have policy already started this. So I, I heard some staff say it's, it's much easier, smooth, because we already started this. This is wonderful. High school seems there are a little bit more mixed feedback. And I read some teachers said, well, you know, some students just a little bit resistant and they, we have to spend time, talk to them. So I'm just wondering, what's the percentage of those students? Like one class, just one student or a couple of students? Because I, I could assume that if a few students are being a little bit, you know, tentative or you have to remind three times, that would cost some class instruction time or even make teacher a little bit more kind of, you know, disrupt that mentality to start the class. Because you have to think, oh gee, these students coming back again. Do I need to remind them? And some teacher even may ideally probably, I, I like to see name on the pouch, so I know whose iPhone was not in there. So I say, wow, this is not easy task. You know, if everybody come to this willingly, that's smooth process, take few minutes. But if you have to check and remind them. So I'm wondering if like that happened once, twice, what's the school discipline? You know, what's school's response to deal with those students? You know, probably I came from different cultures, so I could be sounding a little bit more disciplinary or conservative to handle those issues. So I'd like to hear that.
I think, I think it, it depends on the classroom and in some cases, the population of students. I was talking to a special educator today who faces a lot of conflict with her kids. And it's repeated and it's taxing for her. And there's also different spaces around the high school where career and tech ed have, again, it's kind of larger spaces and there's sometimes multiple rooms. And so building in a routine in those spaces is a little bit more tricky than a general education classroom where the phone holder is generally by the door or the front of the classroom. Kids have the routine built in. And, you know, I think part of next year is also assisting teachers in, in effective strategies for implementation. Where, you know, for example, an effective strategy has been to use to number each holder with the kid's name. You have it right next to the holder and you take attendance through the phone holder, right? And so if the phone's not there, you just kind of remind, you take a look around. Oh, seventeen, okay, whoever it is, like, and then they, a lot of kids are like, oops, you know, and then it's like, they just forget. And that, you know, has been effective for a lot of folks. And so I think part of the, for next year is to assist teachers with not only the education for students and staff to increase buy-in, but also to try to continue to figure out strategies that will work to create that default behavior that has been achieved in a lot of ways for positive direction for this year. Excuse me, but, you know, we, there's still a lot to do, for sure.
You know, I, I, I hope you don't mind. I still wondering, what's the, like, daily occurrence? So in a regular classroom, if you have, happen to have tons of students, do you think this only happens to one or two regular class? Probably special education is a little bit more challenging. I, I understand that part.
I would say, you know, I don't have the exact numbers on it, but I would say from a couple of years ago, and this is what, I get to talking about the kind of cultural shift where a couple of years ago, it would be, and the first time I think we had the holders was three years ago. The vast majority of students would not use it and it would still happen on, on the case. This is before the kind of writing of the policy and anything like that. Now I would say it's the other way around, which is that you have one or two cases or three cases per classroom where there's a, maybe a, for whatever reason, non-compliance, kind of identification of a, of a couple of students or, or struggling to kind of do it every day, whether it's they're not remembering or there's conflict. And so that I think is a lot easier for the teacher to manage because then you have those conversations that can happen to say, hey, like, this is the third day in a row, you know, where I don't want this conflict between us, like, can we figure out something? And it kind of, at this point, because there's so few, I would say, the general education classrooms, that teachers can have those conversations and, and start to kind of manage it that way.
And lastly, i- if some students, you know, demonstrate that kind of behavior again, again, normally do you contact parents and how, how to work out with difficult students? Do we have some kind of, you know, written policies? Or just based on teachers, you know, his or her kind of management style? Just curious about this. Probably I should, you know, ask you this question.
Yeah, I, I was encouraged. I was, you know, as I was looking at the results, I was reflecting back to my time as a teacher and how grateful I would be if, if the survey in my school, you know, looked like these. But only nine percent of teachers said that, you know, that who completed the survey indicated that they have to deal with electronic device issues multiple times per class, which to me is, you know, is encouraging. Sixteen percent that they deal, you know, that they have to address it, you know, multiple times per day, right? Which would indicate that the, that the total size of the problem, I think, is very manageable. When we were doing our research, we also looked in, you know, in Aspen and in ways that we, that we track all of our school disciplinary, you know, issues. And I think that one of the things we have to consider is what is the, you know, most efficient and effective way to, you know, collect, collect data about how we are responding, which I think always will help us have, you know, better, better responses and more effective solutions. But some schools, you know, document these things all in Aspen. Others use Google Forms, which are, which are quicker. Some schools, um, you, you know, document these things all in Aspen, others use Google forms which are, which are quicker. I think that we would need to make a decision as a district, you know, what is the way that we could um collect data on this particular issue so that we could kind of measure. Um, you know, um, you know, measure outcomes in the way that you're proposing. Um, but I, again, I think classroom management is both an art and a science. Uh, I think um, I'm very encouraged um by the classroom communities that I see that our educators um are developing. I mean, I'm in classrooms every week, um, you know, with our principals and. Uh, and, you know, through the instructional leadership academy, and I, and I think that it's, you know, really just identifying, um, you know, the, the, the strategies that, you know, that are working. Um, and then increasing the degree to which we are um doing those strategies consistently.
Okay, thank you.
I can answer. We do have at the middle school, just a, it's part of the yonder protocol. If the student has a violation of the phone, we take the phone for two weeks. It's just a loss of privilege and we always reach out to parents. Um, and that's our moment where we remind them, as Anna said, it's actually your phone. And so it helps support them with their guidelines at home, but there's a very, we kind of follow the same policy at the middle, I mean, policy is a wrong word, but guidelines from yonder. Um, about, and it's about loss of privilege and earning the privilege back, and we get parents to partner with us, and that's meant to support the parents at home. Because, um, because I think they're experiencing the same things.
I'm happy to hear that, you know, by the way, this is a part of uh students' behavior. Uh, you know, development and, you know, it's, it's a whole part of students. Development and, and learning process and uh, but also I understand that sometime, you know, certain students just. Happened to be in the wrong time, a wrong mood or wrong day. Rob.
Well, I said that if a high school, if it becomes a problem, it's just an issue with the teacher. Um, the teacher can take the phone for the rest of the day, right, and go down and have it down at the dean's office when the student can retrieve it at the end of the day. And so, you know, maybe a communication home, multiple conversations with the student, um, and then that would be the, the kind of next step in to say. We're gonna take the phone for the day. Um, and that, um, I think is the, I get down the road from previous steps.
Thanks, thanks.
Emily?
So I apologize because I meant to send this in advance and I'm just going to preface this by saying I'm not expecting an answer. But I just want to, like, for our next meeting, it would be interesting to get this information. So one of the most compelling things when we were first talking about this was a day. Um, the number of sort of online bullying incidents went down significantly. And I'm just curious to know if we're seeing similar things in the other middle schools or if there's been any movement in the high schools. Not anything to answer now, but for later. Thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Rajiv and then Mayor Fuller?
Couple of very quick things. Um. So the first, just a quick comment on the bell to bell. Um, to the middle schools, just given the structure of the high schools and I think what's likely to be. An understandable desire for parents to want their children to have a phone with them when they are going to get a slice of pizza or. Or do something else off campus. I think it would just be very challenging logistically. To, to do that from, from morning to evening. Within class, I think it, it sounds like things are going well. And continue to, to progress. So just as a quick comment there. Um, Dr. Rontree, I think you addressed the, the challenge of the bring your own device. Where we cannot control if they're using G chat or mirroring their phones. Hopefully, as, as the culture changes, those end up being less common issues. Um, but the effort required to police students who are bringing their own devices or who. Are very seriously applying themselves to circumventing the, the culture is, is, may not be worth it. Or assuming it becomes a smaller and smaller percentage of students who are doing that. I did have a couple of questions and again, these are not necessarily to be answered now. Um, you mentioned some of the financial impact. We, we have to provide stipends to. Um, our staff who are managing, manning the, the doors and, and supporting students. Um, we also almost certainly will have to do some replacement of, of pouches on an annual basis as I, I understand they're almost indestructible, but. But they're not, sorry. They're not indestructible. So, um, I think just those, those things will have to be factored in into the, the budget into. The resources we have to put behind the policy. Um, and then finally, in, in terms of uh students with disabilities. And, and some of the challenges, I actually was, was pretty heartened, Dr. Nolan, to see the responses. So I think that is, that, that is actually going well. And, and the question I have is, is whether for, for those students who. For whatever reason, require to, you know, require having a device with them. As, as part of their, their IEP and, and support. Whether that can be a note or an addendum to the IEP and. Pretty much any general ed teacher who has a special ed student should have read that IEP at the beginning of the year and, and at that point should, should be aware that. A certain student requires their Apple watch or other device or heart monitor, whatever that might be. And perhaps working that into the, the process might make it easier for our educators to, to know. Who has an exemption and, and what the limits of that exemption are.
It's like we've talked with the system a day, so first of all, students have a Velcro pouch. So they blend in and they have access to it as needed. And we've developed an exemption card with the student. And that is not just for students who need access for medical needs, but for a parent could attest to the fact that Jackie's not going to have her phone. We've agreed as a family, it's too early. And so they fill out a Google form and we have a exemption card with their picture from Aspen on it. And they just kind of keep it on their backpack or show their card. We have over a hundred students that are exempted, so we're not singling out any particular student because of a unique need, and it's gone fairly well.
Fantastic. It's great to hear. Thank you.
I just want to add to that. Uh, it's been helpful for parents to hear from us how many kids don't have phones. Because kids will tell their parents that everybody has a phone, so that's been valuable information to share, um, particularly to fifth grade parents. Um, as they're coming up and trying to decide to buy one or not.
I just also add, remember, this is, these are, these are personal electronic devices. It's much beyond the phone at this point. The smartwatch is another, just exploded over the last two years. So it's, it's, that's another benefit of this pouch and the whole policy is that it's not just a phone. That's very important, especially at the middle school level.
You know, I'll, I'll just add one other thing, um, because you referenced the, the mirroring. Um, with all the time that I spend in classes, um, oftentimes, you know, I, I will say that students, we, we, we have the policy, our number one objective is. Protecting instructional time. Um, and when I spend time in classrooms, I, I see students that are focused on their, on their academic tasks. Um, I think that is, that continues to be, I think, what, you know, the, the, you know, the compelling reason. Um, you know, for us to have these policies. And I think even when I, you know, I did mention that I've spied a couple of kids doing that, I think it's also important to note. Um, you know, that they seem to have been, you know, done with their, you know, with their activities and it wasn't a distraction from what, what the class was supposed to do, so. I think that it's, um, you know, ultimately, I think that we should be encouraged um with, with what we're seeing.
Thanks. Mayor Fuller?
Uh, this might be a question for Aisha, although Jean probably can answer it. Uh, a year ago, we were talking about fifth graders and fourth graders. How are things going in the elementary school? And how's that working? And the other question is occasionally a high schooler will tell me. Oh, but the aides or the teachers are using them in front of me and, you know, you adults, how, you know. You're saying one thing but doing another. How's it going with the teachers and the aides and?
So we'll come back to you next time on the elementary so that we can get you. Data other than Aisha and I, um, although we hear a lot of smartwatch business, right? It's a lot of that, that stuff. Um, but you want to speak about staff?
I can just say something like, I mean, we've talked to the staff. This is, it's, 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 again, it's a societal problem, right? So what, I mean, I think all of us have talked to our staffs about, right, I mean, it's, right?
Could someone take Mayor Fuller's phone and mine, please?
So we ask, we, again, we generally are trying to ask people to please go to the hallway when you do that, especially the teaching assistants. Um, sometimes when the student. If you're watching a certain student, they're doing fine, they're fully engaged, you get a, there you go. You get something, you, uh, you take the, so which, again, we, we've, I'm sure we're all dealing with this, but um. It's generally, you don't, you don't have students, I mean, you don't have teachers and adults like talking on their phone or texting blatantly.
I, I will just add, Mayor Fuller, that I tell the students, you know, one of the things that comes up is in an emergency, my child needs your phone. I say, I'm, and I am using my phone to communicate with staff members. I said, I'm in charge, I'm responsible for you. And I, I think they just need an explanation about why I need access to my, their phone. I'm not on social media. I'm never on social media. Um, and because they would find me. Um, so I think we need to offer explanation of why the adults, and I think that answers a lot of parent questions too, why the adults need access to their phones.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you all very much for the update. Special thanks to you, Rob, for uh. Taking that leadership role at, at the high school and making this happen.
Thank you.
So I don't think we need any formal vote or anything. Uh. If we're in agreement with the conclusion of keeping the policy as it is and, you know, the, the procedure will get tweaked as it needs to get tweaked.
Okay, so do you want to uh have this as an agenda item for the sixteenth or can we remove that or what would you like to do?
I think unless, how about we'll, we'll, we'll say this, in, unless some, something comes up and somebody has a thought that they really want to. Bring out on the sixteenth, um, absent not hearing that over the coming days, we'll strike that from the agenda for the sixteenth.
So I'll bring you the answers to these questions in my superintendent update for the sixteenth then.
Perfect.
Um, I can tell you that we applied for a second earmark from the legislative group for fifty-three thousand dollars, which would be a. A set of replacements for two years from now, plus the stipends necessary. To relieve the current budget of having to shoulder the before school and after school additional stipends.
Chief? Chris, my understanding is if, if we're not changing the policy, we don't have to do anything, correct? Okay, great.
I think we are in agreement.
Hooray.
Evolution.
Do again annually or is that the cycle for this policy or?
Yes, the uh, the policy says it has to be reviewed annually, annually. I think for like at least the first five years or something.
Tamika?
Uh, so I, I wish I'd thought of this when, when they were here, but. I know when Day piloted the program, they had administrators doing some of the logistical, you know, the morning. Locking protocols and everything. And so it sounds as though at other, at the other middle schools, it's not administrators, it's.
So all of them have a combination of administrators and not administrators, so. Just there's so many doors and so many entrance places and if you don't want TSA to be backed up all the way through first period, you, there needs to be more people. And so that if they've, we're already scheduled fully for duties like lunch and hall and all that, so this is another duty. So any place they couldn't cover it with a regular duty, they have to stipend. I mean, it's literally like twenty minutes at the beginning of the day and twenty at the end, but adds up over a hundred and eighty days.
Maybe we can institute a pre-check program? Trusted, trusted traveler program?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so let's move on to our next agenda item. We have the uh physical education curriculum update.
So while everyone's getting settled, um, just really thrilled to present our second self-study for curriculum um to all of you and to give a shout out to our health and wellness team who is here to join. Um, our consultant and Gina Flanagan, uh, assistant soup for teaching and learning. I did create a memo for the committee here and just for the public's knowledge, which um summarizes all of the policies that we already have in place. In the Newton Public Schools around health, phys ed, um wellness, education, parent notice, all of those things. So you have that in the memo before you. Uh, we received a few emails saying like, oh, here, here's some policies you may want to consider. We had many of them already, so just wanted to share that with you and, and also share that. Um, just as we uh had our math consultants here recently, um, our phys ed and wellness consultant is. Um, here to look at what we do, poke holes in what we do, tell us we're some atta girls and atta boys and things that we're doing. But the consultant is not the committee to make those decisions, right? So for example. We love knowing what the national recommendations on PE time are and we would love to give our kids two hours of that kind of activity. Right now, our school day cannot contain those number of minutes, so I just want to say that we, this is a deep dive into this particular area. And we welcome all the recommendations and um just as with any consultant recommendation, we have to weigh it with the, all the demands of the school day and what. The committee comes up with. So with that, Gina and Sarah, take it away.
Thank you all. It's good to see you all again. I feel like I was just here. Um, so I'm pleased to share with you tonight the first phase of our self-study in physical education, health and wellness. A curriculum area that is far too often regarded as secondary, but in truth, may be the most essential work we do in schools. We are living in a time when our students face unprecedented challenges to their physical, mental and social, emotional health. Helping them build healthy habits, a sense of balance and the resilience to navigate complex lives is not a complement to their academic learning. It is the foundation for it. Over the past few months, I've had the opportunity to visit many classrooms and I want to highlight one in particular, Mr. David Tine's PE classes. I can say without hesitation, what's happening in this class is a very, very exemplified of our portrait of a learner, better than any classroom I think I've seen this year. In the PE health and classroom spaces, you see students collaborating authentically, adapting to challenges, showing empathy. Thinking critically about themselves and others and approaching every experience with a learner's mindset. Our PE health and wellness curriculum plays a role in developing these competencies. This self-study invites us to recognize and reaffirm the fundamental importance of our PE health and wellness curriculum. It also provides an opportunity to consider how we can support and strengthen this work, both structurally and through our resource allocations. Much like our math curriculum review, representatives from across the district participated in a deep dive of our PE health and wellness programs. Our work was done in partnership with Dr. Sarah Benes. Dr. Benes is an associate professor and coordinator of school health education at Southern Connecticut State University. She has a doctorate in curriculum instruction from Boston University, a master's of public health from UMass Amherst, a master's of education from Boston University. And a bachelor of science and athletic trainer from UConn. That was a lot. She is, she was previously the program director for physical and health education programs at Boston University, as well as serving as an associate clinical director at Merrimack College. Dr. Benes has multiple published articles in peer-reviewed journals, as well as three textbooks on health education. She also presents at local and national conferences regularly and is actively engaged in the service to the physical and health education profession, as well as to the community. I want to thank Dr. Benes for involvement in our self-study and with that, would like to share our self-study with all of you.
Just kidding.
Nope.
I think you just scroll down.
I guess so. I'm sorry. Yeah, there you go. All right.
Gotcha.
So our goals for this evening, much like we did with the math curriculum, we want to give you an overview of the self-study. We'll share with you the vision and mission for PE health and wellness. We'll talk a little bit about the framework changes and the self-study process and curriculum review. Sarah will then get into the findings and recommendations and we'll take some of your questions and answers. And just a reminder that our next steps, as Anna just um clearly indicated, is that these are all recommendations. But all the work presented here through the self-study and recommended by um Dr. Benes will be shared with our subcommittees to create our action planning for next year. So just to remind, just, just wanted to draw this to your attention. This is the PE health and wellness current mission statement. When we go through the actual uh curriculum review next year, we'll revisit this mission statement to make sure it aligns. With um the beliefs and the recommendations put forth in the self-study. I also wanted to share that one of the things that this committee also did was in, in keeping in line with our portrait of a learner. We took a, a, a look at the um competencies and standards that are put forth in what's taught in the classrooms and PE and I was. Very pleased to see that it is very well aligned to our portrait of learner and we've indicated that um through the various competencies. Couple of things that we wanted to share with you, that there are new um comprehensive health PE framework changes. And just want to highlight some of the key pieces of that. There's stronger emphasis on practices, explicit representation, integration of physical education. An articulation of social emotional competencies that can apply across school curriculum and content areas. Updates to reflect current and ever-changing influences on health, including technology, media and social media. Increased focus and emphasis on equity and updating guiding principles to encourage a whole school, whole community, whole child approach. I also want to draw your attention to some of the guiding principles for effective comprehensive health and PE programs here. So we're looking for development mentally and age-appropriate, inclusive, trauma-sensitive, culture-sustaining uh learning environments. Diverse perspectives and acknowledgement and going to the equity piece. And dedicated courses for physical education and health education every year from pre-K through grade twelve. And finally, requiring a school-wide culture that promotes equity, health and wellbeing, integration and collaboration amongst education leaders and health professionals. And coherent district-wide support. So with that, I also want to kind of draw your attention, my favorite circle here. So with that, I also want to kind of draw your attention, my favorite circle here, just to kind of keep our eye on the prize, we're in Phase One self-study, and next year, we're going to be going into the pilots and the design and redesign and so forth. Just a reminder that the self-study process involves many components. We created a committee. We also had learning walks. A collection of data and analysis of findings was shared with teachers' principals throughout the district for feedback. This is a more detailed examination of the self-study. I won't go into all the details, but as you can see here, there are many different components, and we're trying to keep that consistency with every single content area. All right, now for the good stuff. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Benes, and she's going to go through each finding and the recommendations.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to do this work. And if I may, just give a quick shout out. Shannon and PJ are here, and they were instrumental along with Courtney in supporting this process. So I just want a quick shout out. Thank you for letting me do that. So also, if you have any questions, one of the reasons that we started out reviewing some of the key aspects of the frameworks is that does guide a lot of the work that is happening and that is recommended in here. So if you have any questions about that, I was actually part of the process of revising the frameworks, and I'm supporting the state in implementation. So I can answer maybe some of those questions too, as it relates to this. So the main finding related to curriculum is that the curriculum does currently align with the district's vision and core beliefs, overarching goals of NPS. The main finding related to curriculum, which I can also speak to work in other districts, which is not super surprising, more robust written curriculum is a recommendation to be created, K-12 across the board, just to ensure more consistency, alignment with the new frameworks. Again, they just came out in 2023, and implementation support just started this last academic year. So a lot of people are in the same place of really reviewing and seeing how to align priorities. We did do some priority standard work as part of the self-study as well with the committee. So progress is already being made toward working to a more developed curriculum. Part of the recommendation does include providing time and resources related to this work. One of the things that came out of working with a committee is the importance of having time, both K-12 and then also grade level specific. Thanks.
We'll do it.
So this just, these slides after just sort of highlights some of the main things that came out, which is again, that using the curriculum review rubrics really did show alignment with vision and core beliefs and just a lack of consistency. There's some other specific elements that if you look at some of the appendices in the self-study, highlight some other specific areas. But on the whole, it's really consistency, adding more opportunity, and articulation of differentiation and accessibility strategies. And as I mentioned, aligning with priority standards that were identified through this process. Second finding, which was really wonderful to see in a lot of different ways, is all the positive feedback related to the strong and positive relationships that students have with the health and wellness teachers across the district. It was really wonderful to get feedback from so many different avenues about the inclusive nature of the classroom. Students feel connected. They feel engaged. Parents are recognizing the engagement that students are experiencing and the value of the courses. So that was really great. So this recommendation is one of the nice ones. It's sort of build on the strength, you know, and just keep providing the opportunity to have professional development related to supporting best practice and to be able to ensure consistency and equity across all areas and all grade levels. Another thing I do want to highlight here on the slide is that one of the things that kind of came out of some of the parent comments and also just, excuse me, thinking broadly, is how to consider whole school approaches. As Gina mentioned, you know, it's not just the classes, right? It's the it's the whole culture. It speaks to the cellphone policy and things, right? So considering other approaches to coordinate across related to wellness and building a culture of wellness, and thinking about also other opportunities throughout the school day to include more physical activity. So I think this already, I sometimes have a tendency to talk over my slides. I apologize. But I think the the main things we wanted to highlight were that the learning walks really elevated the positive nature that students are experiencing in class, the survey data from parents and students, which was awesome. And just everybody really recognizes the value. And one of the main areas that did kind of come through is more opportunity for student choice and voice, which I think is always a great thing to be thinking about. So finding three, as mentioned, you know, there is limited time for physical and health education compared to national recommendations. Some of the other pieces that came out is that there are also some inequities at the middle school level in terms of time is different at the different middle schools. So even if, you know, I would love to see there be increased time overall, but if not, maybe just considering at least the inequities across middle schools so that at least students within the district are getting similar amounts of time. Parents did mention that facilities may need to be improved in some schools. We didn't dive deep into that, so that might be something that's worth looking into, you know, in the next year. But mainly, it was just this recommendation is related to considering increasing instructional time and addressing the inequities at the middle school level. I think that's really it. The other big piece that did come out is that there's not no elementary health education. There are some units that are done in physical education related to health education, but there's no dedicated health education time K to five. And that is something that there's a lot of standards in the new frameworks at the elementary level, and it is recommended both nationally and in those guiding principles that were shared, that there should be annual health education K through 12. And then, as noted, parents cited the need to improve facilities and equipment. So that could be something to look more into. And then finally, part of the new CHPE frameworks was the articulation of social and emotional learning competencies for the state. That's sort of housed under this umbrella. And currently, Newton Public Schools don't have a sort of clear documentation of how social emotional competencies are addressed. So the recommendation is pretty simply to create that document through an interdisciplinary and collaborative approach. This, you know, health and PE also touch a lot of different departments, but not in the same way that SEL does. So really thinking about who needs to be at the table to make sure that there's a really thoughtful and sort of robust look at where SEL is happening, both in physical and health education, but also like across all the other spaces where it would happen. And I think that's, that's me.
All right. So before I turn it over for questions, I just also wanted just to reiterate again that the next steps for this committee will be to dive into their subcommittees and take a look at the various aspects of curriculum instruction, professional learning and communication. And then next year, we'll get into our Phase Two of the curriculum review process, where we will start taking a look at pilots and as well as just mapping out the needs for curriculum instruction assessment work. So with that, I'd like to turn it over for any questions.
Hi, we did have one question from a member, which also, I'm sorry that Tom, our eighth grader from Brown, had to go. His parents picked him up. But so he wrote me a very eloquent eighth grade essay about vaping education and citing the inconsistencies he found across grade levels and middle schools. So I want to say thank you, Tom, and I think I told him that the actual review supports his ideas. And he actually said, you know, it's covered every year, but it's lumped in with smoking and alcohol, and we may need a specific vaping education, given what he's seeing emerge among his peers. So I want to say, go civics educators. Then I want to say, go Tom, for a really beautifully written essay. And I'm sorry that you had to go, but you can watch this on video. And also, so our member asked about, you know, the, what we know is that we have a bona fide high school alcohol drug use, smoking curriculum in ninth grade. Parents may want a refresher at some point in 11th and 12th grade. Is that a conflict with people being able to pick their PE health and wellness electives in older grades, but could that somehow help to address some of our troubling YRBS data? So I don't know if you're at that point where you're pitching, where you're going to do what, but that's a question.
Definitely a note for our committee meets this summer and talking about action steps.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the for the presentation. Other questions from members? Rajiv?
No, no, no. All right. Thank you. Three really quick things. So one, accessibility strategies. Please, certainly what what I've seen in in our individual experience is that PE is handled well, and there are many choices. Adaptive PE is handled well. The the challenge we've often seen with with multiple students is the ability to to provide the wellness curriculum in an accessible way to students with with disabilities and and students, and essentially being able to provide it in a way that's comprehensible and applicable to to their daily lives. We've seen fantastic examples of this. Certainly, the Reflections Program at in middle school does a educator, the the teacher there does a fantastic job of that. But it's it's happening in individual pockets. And so I would put in a plug for for trying to make sure that the accessibility strategies are woven into the updated curriculum. Because I think that will make a significant difference to to our students on on IEPs and who are receiving other supports. So that was one. The mental health and wellness, you know, again, one of the things I've I've realized is that a lot of what's covered, especially again in the high schools, is happening during homeroom. There there is the binder that that students get that they work through. And just given some of the significant mental health and wellness challenges we've been seeing over the last six years or possibly longer, thinking about whether we want to have a more dedicated focus on mental health, I think is also worth looking at as as you go through the review. And then finally, in terms of facilities and equipment, the this ties in with many other parts of of this, of the schools and the city in terms of playground accessibility, just, you know, what equipment's available, what's not, and and some of it for formal PE, some of it just for recess time and so on. But it would be, it would be good to get an understanding of kind of what's out there. I know Dr. Nolan and Casey have been, you know, speaking with with families and educators at Williams, because there are some challenges there, and we're trying to figure out a solution. But I would be surprised if it was just the one playground. So so there may be others, and it just would be very helpful to understand what, you know, what do we need to do? And and again, I'm not expecting an answer, but I just wanted to get that out there as as you think about the next steps. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Anping?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Again, you know, I would like to, you know, comment on the NPS continuous efforts to review the framework. And, you know, PE health and wellness, this is a kind of probably too many people, including myself, is growing emerging framework. And and Rajiv mentioned that a lot of social emotional issues, which, you know, in the past probably were not defined in a traditional PE, you know, physical education. So a lot of things. Dr. Benes?
Benes, yeah.
Benes, you mentioned that 2023 framework, I did not hear clearly. This was issued by the federal Department of Education, state or?
Yeah, it's it's. It's from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Federal level?
Nope, state level, Massachusetts.
State level, okay. So seems pretty new. And, you know, probably if I have time, I'd like to, you know, glance through to see, because there's so content, you know, and I bet many things were very new compared a few years back. When was the last edition, if you happen to know?
1999.
Oh, 99. That was total different world, right? At that time, probably PE, mostly PE, and probably a little bit wellness and health. Now, one particular question, I was a little bit tentative to ask, and but I thought this was a good time. I know that probably 10 years ago, 20 years ago, sex education was a little bit controversial. And I know some parents were very critical, and they asked, well, no, 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 my kids are not ready for this. Take them out. So what's the counter-school policy regarding this? It's kind of upping or up out of? And if parents do not raise the issue, automatically students will take the course? Or, you know, parents have to, you know, give the permission, then they will be included? Just.
So in the memo that you have, Anping, that I gave you about this?
Oh, oh.
A rental notification relative to sex education is policy IHAMA. And we follow it. And we also, unless it's copyrighted material, we will send parents whatever they want to look at through email. If it's copyrighted, we have them come in and take a look at it. So same as we do with the YRBS survey, which is a copyrighted piece of material, or teacher assessments, things like that, that we don't want people having the assessments. But parents can come in and look at it at the school that they're at. Otherwise, we just send them the materials. And now we have posted on the website what is actually covered at each grade level. As these units emerge, those units will also be out there. So if parents can see what is taught when, and the procedures are right here for them.
Okay. Thanks for the update, and I probably should be informed. But but just keep in mind, you know, with we have quite a large number of immigrant families, you know, because cultural language issues, most of the language issues, probably they are not aware, oh, I should check out all these things.
So we actually send it home to everyone in their home language. It goes through Parent Square, and they get it.
Specifically on this?
This, we are bound by the law to do that.
Specific on this topic?
This sex ed notification.
Okay, okay. That that's good to know. So by the way, during your two years here, have you happened to be aware of any parents or some, you know, someone contact you, community members?
Three this week, I think. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we talk about sex all the time here.
Well, the reason I'm saying that partially, once I talked to my daughter, and she is, you know, 26 adult, and kind of tongue-in-cheek, but she said, Daddy, I never learned something in the school. And I was shocked. So she might be a kind of ally. I don't know. But I thought, you know, it's not like 20, 30 years ago. She just left school a few years, you know, from high school.
Big moment is like Fifth Grade Puberty Day, right? So it's like a big deal. So it's it's a it's a tradition.
You know, I had to say that a family would never talk about this issue. And so and but but anyway, this is just, I think now probably it's no longer as controversial as 10 years ago or 20 years ago. I'm glad, but still, as as, you know, I noted that there is still some parents. So overall, I'm very glad, and I'd like to comment that I really like this, this, the concept of whole child, whole school, whole community, and probably more so than 10 years ago, certainly more than 20 years ago, because we have to work together, and there's so many issues. And, you know, personally, I could see that, you know, through my daughter. And of course, in community, we had heard so many during the COVID. And of course, and we still have that kind of legacy now, the lingering issues from the COVID. So make these things are more critical than ever. So thanks for the efforts, and I really appreciate that.
I just want to say, Anping, I made a joke there, but we want parents to be able to exercise their values around this educational piece. So we want to give them the information they need to make those choices.
Thank you. And of course, sometimes we are information overload.
Of course.
So that's that's a challenge, you know, when school said, hey, we send all the links, we send all documents, the challenge is, you know, some parents probably never pay attention. And until something happened, some issue come up, they want to see, you know, all the documents, regulations, all the things. It it's, you know, that's the that's the challenge we all face now. But so I just like to see school being a little bit more thoughtful and, you know, being a little bit more proactive to certain groups of parents and and reach out a little bit more. Thanks.
Thanks, Anping. Other questions? Alicia?
I have a budget question for you. So I know with math, you have 2 million of free cash ready to go for that curriculum. For this one, in our operating funding ended next year at 296.5. Is this curriculum in that number for you, or do we need funding for that?
It is not. We do need funding for that.
And what do you estimate, if you can, maybe you can help something? I know you're talking K to 12 and everything, but what do you think?
And it's the high school kind of manages their funding for PE health and wellness right now. So I wouldn't even be able to articulate that. But I do know that the requests and lists are huge in terms of that support, because there's not much in place right now. So I don't even know. So I don't even know, even know. This one's going to take a little while to forecast.
Okay. On the order of math, 2 million? What's that? On the order of the math?
I wouldn't anticipate $2 million worth of expenses.
No, but we do have like that, keep in mind, it also includes professional development of teachers and so I think it was, it was a lot.
I'll remain to be wowed.
I can just add, if you're interested, there has been one set released last summer. There's going to be another this summer through DESI in partnership with the Rennie Center. They've done reviews of health and PE curriculum that include like curriculum rubrics and things and it includes costs. So if you're curious to see sort of what the landscape is, those are available through DESI's website. And like I said, there was one round last summer. There's going to be another one this summer. Just to get a sense of, there's a really wide scope of ways that you can think about curriculum from like whether you do K-12, you know, whole thing or subject specific. So if you're interested, curious, you can do a little deep dive.
That reminds me, the purchase year on this one, is that FY '27?
At the end of next year, yes.
Tamika?
So I was wondering if you could give a little bit more context or clarity around some of the inequities you mentioned. Where do inequities in the instruction time for physical and health education? So where are those manifesting in the district and what does that look like? And how great are those inequities?
That's a really good question and I didn't print out that part of the self-study. So I apologize that I can't give specific numbers off the top of my head. But when we were looking at the phys ed time and phys ed and health ed time, the differences between, and maybe you all know too, but I think it was sort of the difference between Bigelow compared to the other, is it, yeah, compared to the other districts is, is not the same. And it's, and it's actually fairly different.
So it's less.
I believe Bigelow is more. Thank you. I knew I should, probably should have printed out that table, so I apologize.
I'd be curious to just take a look. In the long one.
I was like, I know it's in there somewhere. I just didn't, didn't, didn't print it.
I will grant you, I did not look as closely at the long one as I did at the presentation slides, but thank you. Page, what? 2021. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry.
No worries.
So just for people who may not want to read all the pages. So in terms of sixth grade, 140 minutes per six day cycle, Bigelow, 132.5 at Brown. Day is 184 minutes per six day cycle, half of the year. Oh, I should say Brown was three quarters of the year. Bigelow is the full year. And Oak Hill, full year, 90 minutes, six day cycle. And then it's totally different for seventh and eighth grade. So it's all over the map.
Yeah. It's a little mind boggling to try to get the chart in a way that made sense.
And then health is, health is also, there's a range between 1,380 minutes a year for sixth, seventh and eighth grade to as little as 994 minutes a year, depending on the school. So you can see, like, when you think about coverage and then to your point, Rajiv, about the accommodations for access, we have to get this first part down. What are we covering when and how much? And then we can accommodate different learners.
By the way, that speaks the challenges of in the same district, there will be this much gap among the same middle school, you know, you know, should be, you know, largely very close, but this is just one small example of why we need to review the curriculum.
Mayor Fuller, were you seeking to be recognized?
It's just building oddly enough on what Tamika just said. Both Dr. Nolan and Dr. Benes almost apologetically said, and we can't, not sure we can add any more minutes, but both wanting to. But I think that's worth discussing, maybe particularly in the elementary school or at different grade levels. I would, we should have the discussion. It's a trade-off, no doubt about it, and a difficult one, but worth having.
So know that the elementary working group with our NTA partners has been working on this and there will be recommendations about things like recess, you know, playtime, lunchtime, all of those pieces. And, and I guess I just want to say something that isn't audited here is also what kind of food we serve children every day out of the health and wellness guided school lunch program. So, you know, I see a lot of PTO events. I see a lot of junk food. You know, in, in some districts, those things are not allowed at all. So I do think we have to come up with a balance. We are supposed to be monitoring what we feed kids when they're under our roof. So.
Rajiv? Is there anything like an open source curriculum that, that could be the basis of what we do or that we could adopt?
That's a good question. There are some resources that are free, but not sort of a K-12 holistic curriculum. No.
Because I know we talked about Open Sai Ed and I didn't know if there was something analogous. Yeah.
I think Shape America has guidelines. There are certain curriculums that are certain companies.
There's, there's some resources that are available to help with the guidance. And I can just speak to, I'm with 25 different districts in the state right now and a lot of them are sort of in the same place of trying to figure out how to do it. And so unfortunately, there's not the kind of resources, like there's not an Open Sai Ed. There are lots of options and there's lots of ways to maybe think about, you know, building on what does already exist in the district and, and doing some supplementation with some of those free resources, but nothing, nothing K-12 comprehensive that's open sourced.
Although based on what you just said, there may be the potential to partner with other districts.
Oh, sure. I mean, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of, I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak to how Newton does that work, but I would just say that.
I know we're, we're at least a year or two actually away from doing that, but it just might be interesting if, if we're one of 25 districts that you know of that are interested in, in building out a robust curriculum, it could be a joint effort.
And I just want to highlight too, there's a lot of great teacher directed curriculums already in place. It's just a matter of coordinating it and reviewing it and making sure it fits and aligns to the standards. So I do want to mention that. It's not like we don't have anything. It's just coordinating it and refining it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Flanagan and Benes. All right, let's move to our next discussion item, which is the policy updates of, which we have somewhere around 37 policies related to gifts and support organizations. Yes, discussed for our 12th meeting. I think we've, we've been at this in some length. I know there has been a lot of back and forth with our PTO partners and with CPAC in particular. Do you, is there any update you have on any of that you'd like to share?
The PTOC and boosters, we've been in deep discussion. Amy Mistro, our Director of Business Operations is with me online. I would say to you that we have come to a middle ground with our PTOs with this policy. And so I do want to speak to, Alicia asked some questions about, you know, the process that I just want to say sort of reflects where we are, which is this. We, we have a process where we pre-approve what PTOs are doing and we've put some summer meetings in place in order to fulfill our end of the bargain, which is quickly getting things done so people can continue their lives as PTO people. There was a lot of pushback around the more granular and frequent approval system. So as something new came up, like donations were made, it would be approved right then. So there was like the proposal idea. And then at the end you get the, here's how it all went and you accept that donation, those donations as they, as they actually shook out. So that is a far better situation than we're in now. It's certainly not what some districts do, which is every time there's a donation, you are approving stuff at a meeting, which would be a lot of different approvals, right? So you've been asking great questions. Amy, anything that you want to add to that? I, I can only say that we've had conversations with our PTO that go something like this, like, yeah, this is a pretty good way that you've integrated our concerns into the process, right? No one's like, yes, bring me more policy, please, right? Go ahead, Amy.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Thank you. I would just reiterate that I think the current support guides, support organization guidelines definitely reflect the feedback that we have received, that they, we are trying to build upon what the support organizations are already doing, build on the structures that they have in place, not create extra work for them and make volunteering burdensome, which was a consistent theme. I did meet with the Newton South Boosters last week, both Becky and Melissa. It was, I thought, a really great conversation. They, we left, I did not feel that they had any residual concerns. And I definitely affirmed in that meeting that when we get approval from school committee on policies, that our next step is a major outreach campaign to make sure that the support organizations are all aware of what the new guidelines are and that we support them through that process. I did not promise perfection in the first year, but open dialogue so that we could get to a really strong working relationship and that it works for everybody, what we need to do and it doesn't create a burden for them.
Okay, thank you. So I, I mean, I certainly came into this when this discussion started with, you know, probably wanting erring towards the sides of a more hands-off approach is, you know, the whole concept of these being independent organizations with their own bylaws and own boards of directors. I get it and I understand. And, you know, I shared with Dr. Nolan that I understand what we're trying to get to here. So I think if everyone's in agreement, this is the solution, then, then this is the solution. I do think as, and Amy, you just kind of pointed to this, we, we probably need to have a little grace as we deal with organizations. If people are stumbling, let's not, you know, have people not be able to achieve their goals because, you know, they didn't fill out the form in triplicate or, you know, whatever the case may be. Other thoughts from members? Questions? Rajiv?
I, I share your perspective in terms of the difficulty of that balance between making sure that we, we are aware of all fundraising being done under the NPS umbrella and, and how it's being done and what it's being done for. Versus putting in levels of bureaucracy that are going to slow down all those support organizations. So what I would suggest, I, I think it's taken a lot of hard work from Dr. Nolan and Amy and others to get this, to get these policies to where they are. It would be perhaps good to ask for a report back to the school committee after, after they've been in place for a year. And not even so much the policies, but really the procedures that, that are how the policies will be implemented. And that, that should give us a chance to figure out if there have to be adjustments made, if anything is too onerous or not. So I'm comfortable with what we have right now and the level of feedback and changes that have gone in. I just think in, in a year or so, there, there should be some review of how well it's working.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think that probably sounds that like that'll be ripe for spring of 2026. Tamika?
So in addition to the cycle of review that Rajiv articulated, I think it's, it's also relevant and important to have that cycle of feedback as part of the review. And one thing I'm really appreciative of, Anna and Amy, is when you look at where this started to where it is now, you have embedded, you know, a really thorough process of engaging and working with the PTOs and the other support organizations and trying to find, you know, the, the deep dive into who they are, where they are and how they'll be affected. So I appreciate that. And I think the policies before us related to their, you know, how we're going to have some type of overview over those relationships. I think it's, it's a good process. It doesn't seem overly burdensome, which was the initial fear. It does seem like something that will work, work well. And with the review in place, we can certainly tweak it as necessary. If that comes about. So thank you.
Paul?
Just want to add my gratitude to all involved, to Amy, Dr. Nolan and all the members of the community. And I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the policies set forth in the, in the records of this meeting.
Okay. And to be clear, that is policies, GB, EBC, JJE, JP, KBE, KCD, KCDC, KHA for the record. You got all that, Lisa? Perfect. Is there a second to that motion? Second by, moved by Paul, second by Anping. Emily?
Paul, you jumped the gun.
All right.
I just have a quick comment to make. So I'm perfectly fine with all of this. I'm definitely going to be voting for it. But I just, I want to reiterate something that I said a month ago, which is that there are references in this about the equity policy and the equity guidelines. And just an acknowledgement and an understanding that that's going to be another step in the process, hopefully sooner rather than later. But I understand that we need to get this off the ground first, but I also just want to make sure we don't forget that piece. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. You, I meant to actually mention that and I appreciate you catching that. Mayor Fuller?
Okay, so eight years on the school committee, can I ask a really stupid question?
There's no stupid questions, Mayor.
There is on this one. How the heck are these initials come up with after all these years?
I don't know. M A S C.
It's the M A S C.
Is there any logic?
It's M A S C.
Is there some logic to it?
There is, and it's, the, the book is divided into like the, by students is one set of letters and then by governance is another set of letters. And they just keep adding letters as they add policies.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's actually a, a billing vote that they transfer from numbers to letters.
Thank you.
I know.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? That was a very good question, by the way. It was not.
Yeah, it wasn't stupid.
I, I have wondered that from time to time. All right. Seeing none, why don't we take a vote on the motion to approve all those letters? Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two, yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven? Ward eight is absent. Okay. That passes.
Congratulations, Amy.
Zero, one absent. Thank you very much for all the work on this, Amy. I know you spent an ungodly amount of time, as did Dr. Nolan and as did, as Paul mentioned, all our.
I would say thank you to our PTOs.
Yeah, all our partner groups.
Partner with and our booster organizations. But now I'm worried about Amy and whether this process is going to overwhelm her. So we want this review at the end of the year as much as anyone.
Okay, let's move on to our next discussion item, which is the strategic plan adoption.
One more handout for everyone, which is just a visual. So the committee has before them or has had for a couple of meetings, a memo, a simplified strategic plan with a dashboard draft and the longer strategic plan document that was developed by our consultants, Teaching Learning Alliance. They were slated to be here with us a couple of meetings ago. They could not be here tonight. But you have folks in the room here who were part of the strategic planning process and they can certainly answer questions about what it was like, who was involved. And the memo, of course, gives you that information, the memo that predates the draft of the plan. I made the simplified version because I believe that we needed a pared down version for the public. And then I would submit for your review, the graphic that I just gave you. We are prototyping out what the dashboards might look like to the average person. So if I'm a person wanting to see, you know, what are the goals of the district? What are the metrics by which we are going to look at them? We might have a document that looks, I mean, a website that looks just like this, that's, that's updated quarterly or, you know, three times a year, however many times we decide we can do it managably, that would give the public that information. That would give the public that information on how, how do we think we're doing towards our own goals that we put forward. This summer, should you approve the simplified version, we will then work with that document, our long-range planning facilities document, our curriculum review cycle documents, our tech sustainability documents. And we will give Tamika what she wants, which is the plan in a nifty graphic and a dashboard that says, this is how we'll tell you whether we're doing what we said we would do. So I gave you some samples because I do need to sit with administrators now with our second year of State of the Union data will be complete in June. We have all kinds of new assessments. We have new resources available. So we want to, we want to put some meat on the bone so that by next fall, you'll see the, the fully promulgated plan. This is what the consultants put together based on the community process. It's now professional administrator's job to take this information and put it into manageable steps that can be accomplished in keeping with the manner that the school committee has told me is expected. So that is what is next. I'm happy to answer any questions or have committee members, Alicia and Emily, both participated on Ping visited for a couple of meetings. And we have folks in the audience here who participated as well.
Questions from members? Mayor Fuller?
First of all, thank you all for lots of hard work. I, I don't know quite how to say this effectively, but it feels to me, there are four very important areas here. But feels to me that the student one, the learning and wellbeing somehow should be, if there was a circle, it's the big circle in the center. It's both centered and bigger.
It will be number one in the plan.
Yeah, but even out of disproportionately bigger, however visually you end up doing it. I think you've always been very student-centered and obviously our human resources are probably number two, but you know, somehow showing that is at least how I think about it.
Can I just answer that quickly? So I also, I don't know if you've noticed, but in terms of the number of initiatives under each of the four categories, the, the student one has far more than the other ones. And so while that's a subtle way of saying that, it's, it's definitely there in, in the strategic planning document itself.
Good point. Paul?
Thanks, Chris. I wanted to start by expressing appreciation to everybody who worked on this, whether in the staff or from the community. It's an impressive amount of work and, and very high-quality work. And, and I personally am very grateful for, for all the time and effort people put into it. Like Mayor Fuller, of those four categories, I, I agree with you. But the other three are, are key also in terms of achieving the, the, the fourth. So I think, I think it is appropriate to have them all there. I was left concerned by, by that long list, Emily, and, and the somewhat shorter lists under the, the other three. Because there's certainly nothing there to, to disagree with it. But it, it, it felt to me like a wish list for all that's good in education that we want to accomplish. And usually a strategic plan is actually designed in part to help you deal with the, the question of scarcity, to, to help you decide which things you're not likely to be able to do within the timeframe that's envisioned by the strategic plan. And, and I, I didn't get that sense of scarcity, of having to, to make hard decisions over the coming years as to which things are most important. But I think what's more important right now is the four major areas. And I think what's also more important is what Dr. Nolan talked about being the work of the summer, which is to decide which metrics and which approaches are, are going to be set forth to gauge success for those, those big areas. So, so I, I, I'm prepared to, certainly to vote for this. One, in recognition of all the hard work that's gone into it. Two, in terms of the thoughtfulness of, of, of the big picture presented there and, and many of the, the smaller items as well. And it's, it's lovely to see a, a document that's consistent with our, our profile, profile of a graduate and with all the other things we've been, that Dr. Nolan has been leading us on for, for these many months now. And I think would present an excellent, an excellent picture for the district going forward. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Paul. Other questions? Tamika, then Rajiv?
Just a quick comment. I think buttressing Paul's in a way, I hope. When I look at this strategic plan, I think of difficulty of wrangling, for lack of a better word, fifty, some odd, some odd members of the strategic planning team and essentially proving the theory that we all fundamentally want the same thing for our students and our, our children. I, I think that what it does is it sets out a road for us to travel on. And to Paul's point, it doesn't tell us how fast, how far, what roadblocks there may be on that road, but it does lay it out for us. And it's up to us in successive years to be able to reach those mile markers. So I just want to kind of keep that in mind because that's how I think about it. It's not the everything, but it's the, it's the vision of the thing and where we should all aspire to go and how we get there. That's going to be certainly riddled with challenges, I'm sure, but it's going to be a heck of a ride. So well done and thank you for all of the folks who participate in the strategic planning. Thank you so much.
And ju- just if I can follow on Tamika's comment real quick. This is, what we're really talking about here is a, is a framework or a blueprint. This is not the, you know, the final, you know, to Paul's point, there's going to be discussions over the summer. And the, the, the other question I had along those lines was, you know, I've never been part of a five-year strategic plan that has survived five years. What's the expectation of, you know, the, the revisit, even if it's singular points of this of, you know, these, the initiatives we have here, the, the, you know, the benchmarks we put in place have been achieved in year three. And we've got to set out some new goals, even if it's a supplement to the five-year plan. Is this, is this sort of intended to be a, a little bit of a, a living, a living document?
Well, you ha- it has to be because we can't set it and forget it. And, you know, there may be some financial constraint or some new like learning development that we did not forecast here that we may need to address. So for example, if the Long Range Planning Committee decides to do something with our facilities that we don't know today, it's going to change the work of what we, what we do. If, if the committee makes a decision to eliminate all busing, that's going to change our work, right? But no one's doing that, by the way. I just want, I'm just using it as an example. You know, so it would depend on what, some circumstances that will change. But I'll come to you each fall with, you know, the, the workup of what needed to change. That said, I, I do need some strategic blessing on, I've listened to a lot of you. You've given me feedback about the dashboard and are these the things that we are saying that we're really? This is what I've heard you say are the metrics you want to hear about. Student engagement, how involved are students, their mental health, academic success, life readiness, college readiness. So we tried to put together, you know, what we thought would be those measures that, and all the strategic initiatives will drive those results. So I'm looking for that kind of, of direction. And then we will have to keep updating you on what activities there are and how that will change. And it will also inform what presentations we bring to you every year.
Thanks for that clarification. Unping, Rajiv, Paul, Emily?
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking about that too. You know, I involved a little bit different strategic planning, but this one seems, I'm looking at the core area. And then your paragraph text, I'm not quite clear about your paragraph text. So we supposed to provide some kind of?
So I would suggest that you look at the memo, Unping, and that has the dashboard at the back. It's a table. One of the questions from a member was, you know, there's a lot of edgy speak in the plan and the dashboard. Can we have a glossary of terms? And I, I showed you that graphic just because what we present to the public should be user-friendly and not be full of edgy speak. So that will, but there is a section that looks like this. All the different tables and measures that we think have been meaningful through all the strategic planning conversations and with our community. So for example, we need to be very public about who's reading on grade level by grade three and through grade eight. And we want to report that to you over and over about how that is and disaggregate that by our subgroups and just run at it. And, and, you know, everything in our, you know, elementary through middle school resources will be put towards that and making sure that students are there. There's a lot of those different metrics here.
Okay.
As long as you, you say these, we're moving in the right direction, we're, we're going to bring this to you fully formed for the fall.
I, I, I appreciate that kind of thinking and approach. What I meant to say is that in the past, when you set some kind of goals and then try to reach the goals and then possibly in few years, and then people just kind of forget that, oh, the leadership changed and then no, not much efforts to put there. But I, I, I want to also mention that you put under the each core area, you have metric one, two, three, and they give them weights. Now that's something I think, I, I think it's, it's, it's really concrete. Then you hold yourself accountable to those metrics area. And it takes a lot of time. I agree with Tamika that a lot of time, you know, you, you have to do a lot of brainstorming and come up with some kind of consensus. But, but these things are very meaningful. And then we can, in, in a following year, we can look at that, how much, you know, we have accomplished, still how much the gap there. But will be challenging. I'm looking at the very first one, learning and wellbeing. And learning, we can think of, okay, I want to have ninety-nine percent of high school graduation. Now that, that's easy one. Or how many students pass the MCAS test? The exceeding level, you know, or, or the, you know, AP test. If you're getting to the very detailed, probably we will never get to that level, but, but I'm just using them as examples. But, you know, community engagement, we can say how much percentage of, of the parents respond and get the feedback. I'm thinking about that. It's, it's meaningful. It's wonderful to have those metrics. So we can look back and then rather than saying, well, we, we done well, we made a progress, you know, that's wonderful. Or so now we, we have those specific things. I, I'm kind of excited to have those discussion. So during the summer, you mentioned that, you know, retreat?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that, that's very meaningful because that forces us to think in a concrete terms, what we want to accomplish. I don't know whether that would be huge plan, like we'll build a new school, probably not. But I'm very anxious to, to start that kind of conversation. Thanks.
Thanks, Unping. Rajiv?
So first, thank you. I know a tremendous amount of effort went into this and I watched it from afar, wasn't bold enough to actually show up to anything, but it's been, it's been good to read. I agree with Mayor Fuller in terms of if this is a, a graphic that we're going to be sharing with the community, we, we probably want to show the, the learning and wellbeing front and center and everything else supports that. And I, and I know that's the intent. I just think in terms of the actual presentation that, that will make it more obvious to, to someone who has not been a part of this. The other thing is mea culpa, the prioritization exercise Dr. Nolan had asked us to do. I tried to get through it and there were, there were a lot of items and it was very difficult to get to a granular, okay, I would put this one ahead of that one.
The committee felt the same.
So, so I did not, I did not finish that effort. It may be something that, that might be better handled in a, in a discussion and possibly by, by grouping together some of those initiatives in terms of prioritization. Fully understand why we were asked to do it because I think that gets back to Unping's point about there are a lot of things we want to do, but we, we do need to provide that guidance in terms of what comes first, or at least what are the top five, right? So, so I acknowledge we have to get there.
So just feel the obligation for you to just know what the full scope of what was said by the committee, unfettered and filtered by me, because I certainly have opinions about what it should be. But I, you know, we work hand in glove as a board and a, as an administrator with that. So I just wanted you to see the task that the committee had to, had to go through.
And there, and there was a lot, and, and I think to Paul's point, there, there wasn't much you could argue with, right? It was all, it was all good. So we, we need to figure out a way to get to that. And then the, my assumption, and I think, Chris, you might have had this one, was five-year plans get refreshed every one to two years, right? There's nothing wrong with having a five-year plan, but there's never an expectation that in year four, it's going to look like the, the initial version. So we'll, I'm assuming continue to have that refresh. Thank you.
You know, also based on what the strategic initiatives are there or what the, what the framework is that we're putting here now, it's also, is there anything that seems wildly out of sorts from what you've heard as a, a committee member? You all did your own entry work as new committee members, you know, Mayor Fuller, you've been here a long time doing a lot of leadership work. You know, that's another reason to put those pieces out there. How'd the committee do? Did they really get the spirit of what the community is chewing on? And, you know, there was disagreement even within that committee. So this, this constitutes, you know, some pretty sweaty, we were in like one meeting where the consultant was like, if you don't make some decisions, we're going to have five more meetings, right? And then all of a sudden, people were like making decisions, like it really went. So I just, I just want to make sure, because this is our, our contract with the community for the next few years. And I want it to feel like the right work.
I didn't see anything there that was objectionable or markedly different from what I've seen or heard of.
Paul?
Thanks, Chris. Rajiv, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you a bit, and I, I've talked to Dr. Nolan about this too. Like you, I didn't see anything objectionable or untoward in, in those long lists. And like you, I found it frankly impossible to, to rank them. But where, where I'm disagreeing is I, I don't think that's our job as a school committee is to rank things at that level of detail. Our job is to, to do what Dr. Nolan just suggested. If there's anything in there that, that strikes us as inappropriate or off-putting or untoward, we should, we should say so and, and, and work that out among ourselves. But I think, as Chris was saying before, this, this provides guideposts, it provides a framework for the future. Like every strategic plan, right now, it's perfect because it's a plan. And we'll find out over the coming months and years what needs to be adjusted, whether it's because of the changing circumstances or whether we just learn that we can look at things in a, in a different way. So Dr. Nolan, to, to your point, I, the, the kind of dashboards you've been talking about and the specific things you've been talking about, to me are, are feel right on target. That I personally trust the judgment of you and your senior team in helping us decide which are the most important things to present and most meaningful, both acad- both academically and administratively. And I, I would not be at all upset or, or concerned if six months or a year from now, you say, you know, on this one item that we put in the dashboard, we think that's no longer reflective of the highest priority or the best way to measure things and so we want to change it. But I think it's, it's not only good enough to get started, it's excellent to get started. And I think we should, we should use what you've suggested.
Okay. I think, I feel like there's a, an, enough consensus here. I know this has been previewed. I don't know if this is something we want to put forward tonight to, to vote upon. I think. Sorry, did you?
Nope.
Oh, well, I thought you were.
Nope.
Oh. Tamika, did you have?
Yes, um, in the vein of respectful disagreement, uh, I will, I had an initial reaction, Dr. Nolan, when you said that this is the contract with the community. I would respectfully correct that it's more of a blueprint to the community because a contract is a, it's a bargain. It's, 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 there's an offer and then there's acceptance on the part of the community. And I think we haven't gotten to that step just yet. And blueprint to me seems like the more appropriate vernacular just because then it does factor in that there's the buy-in. The, the community in some way has to fund this. And so that's an integral part of this. And I think putting out the um, that this is, this is something we are, we are seeking approval on. We are seeking the green light by community, uh, funding with, um, with all of our various community partners. I think I, I would be more comfortable phrasing it like that. Minor correction. And, and with that, I would be happy to make a motion to approve the strategic plan. Is there something more nuanced than that that I need to do? Right? Motion to approve the strategic plan.
Okay. Second, okay, we have a motion by.
Can I ask a question, Chris?
Yes.
Here, we, we, I just mentioned that the core area, we have the, under each core area, we have three metrics. I thought when uh, I mentioned that this will be contract, I thought these will be very concrete. If we prove these are important things, we need to meet the metric, then could it be looked at as a contract if we got some approval? So if metrics all blank and I don't know, hardly there any, seems to me no, no substance here because these are aspirational statement. And if we, there were no metrics there, you can argue learning and well-being, boy, this is such a huge.
If I may, Anping, the, the um, that, that sheet she just, Dr. Nolan handed out, I think was just meant as a sort of visual of what this, of what this might look like. And when you look at the, the actual data dashboard in the memo and it says things like, we want X percent of our students at or above grade level. We want X percent of our students to uh, you know, master algebra by eighth grade. Those are sort of the real mileposts that I think um are, are more in line. Whereas the, that other one pager was just a, just more of a mock-up of a visual of what it might look like when you, when you land on a website and a, and a, and a family, a community member can just say in, you know, very short order, oh, I understand this.
So when we say we are going to approve this, basically we prove all these specific percentage here.
So you approve the plan and, and I will bring you the evidence of effectiveness of the plan.
But, but here we're talking about, I, I look at this afternoon, I, I did not spend significant time, so I look at the, some I, I, I thought were very impressive. And uh, some I, I thought we can discuss, but are we?
So in the plan that, the simplified plan that's in your hand.
Yeah.
I took all the initiatives from the strategic planning group and simplified them into strategic initiatives. And then there's a section that says evidence of, of success. These measures drive those, that is the evidence of success for most of them. And so, so the dashboard is just a sample. I'm, it, it can look any way we want it to look, but it's, how do we know that our students have mastered grade level reading by giving you that percentage in the dashboard? So.
Anping, the motion is really to approve the strategic plan itself, say, yes, we agree, this is the framework or the blueprint. And then there will be further refinement from there to exactly how this all looks in terms of the mileposts and.
Do we need to prove this dashboard draft or that's separate or that's up to uh, not Dr. Nolan to?
If you like the direction, I will keep, I will bring you the, the dashboard that reflects the five-year trajectory. This is what I think it's going to look like.
Emily, go ahead.
Okay.
So, Anping, just quickly, um, so you, you talked about the, that this, you know, laid out, lovely laid out document.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is mostly is aspirational. And I just want to take two seconds to describe what the process was for the strategic planning group, which started with the high-level aspirational. And on, on the, on the document that, that one pager that you got is listed, the vision, the mission and the core values. We spent a lot of time going through that as a, as a large group in the strategic planning group. And I think that, I think we landed on something that um, we actually got broad consensus, which is amazing considering the varied groups that we had. And from that came the high level, the four core areas. And then from that came, well, what potential strategic initiatives could we do under that? And then that's what came back to us with the whole um prioritization process. But the strategic planning process didn't talk about dashboards and metrics yet. We are just looking at from it as a, as a higher level. And as the superintendent mentioned, once we approve this, then we have next steps in the process in terms of more specificity and definition of the initiatives and timelines and metrics uh, uh, for success, right? That's that dashboard that we're talking about. So, so, so what you have in front of you is just an example. It's nothing that the strategic planning, the strategic planning group did not talk about specific metrics for success. We talked about outcomes, what, if we did this initiative, this is the outcome that we were hoping for, but it is not a day, it's not data. There's no dashboard associated with that. So the strategic planning is just focusing on that aspirational piece as well as the strategic initiatives. And that's what we're voting on today.
Okay. So my, my, as I mentioned, my question here, for, for example, uh, and the student achievement and learning, the key strategic measure, number one, percentage of reading on level by grade three and through grade eight. Five year ago, eighty-five percent. So this is a, this is a real goal or it's just?
I don't think we're voting for that.
No. I need to get the end of the year first round baseline benchmark data from this June before I can set a baseline. This committee has talked a lot to me about wanting to see those metrics on a, or metrics like them on a regular basis, including you. Right? So, and you'll see, like for family engagement, I put a section that very much speaks to what you've said to me, which is how often are we reaching out in a multilingual fashion to ELL families? So I put samples that I know reflect what you have said, you've heard from the community that is linked to what the strategic planning committee put out there. It, that, those may not be the exact metrics, but I will bring them to you once this is, once this is formed and we fully, we, we know exactly what it is. So for example, when the math committee goes through and says, here's what our trajectory for math curriculum is going to be, I then have to make the dashboard reflect what we say. If we don't offer algebra in grade eight, I can't have a measurement that says how many kids finish algebra by grade eight. So, but it's a sample. This is a sample of what could be our future.
Sample, okay, okay. And how do you translate to the metric one, metric two, metric three, and the, the, for example, linear world?
The items on the white sheet would simply roll up to that website.
And ideally, um, ideally, I like to see the weighting here. But if we, if you, if we agree that we were going to develop this during the summer uh, retreat, that's all fine. But probably when we prove, I thought it's, I, it's nice to have the percentage weighting rather than X here, meaning we don't know what's, what will be those metrics. So um, that, that's my thinking because it's too vague here. It's all blank.
We, we, we don't even have the benchmark data yet to build off of, right? So we, once we have the benchmark data to start developing what those metrics are, that will be the work that will take place this summer into next year to, but it's all going to be based on, on, you know, sort of the ideal presented in the strategic plan itself, which is where Dr. Nolan needs a direction from us right now to, do we agree with the, the, the framework and the blueprint that the strategic planning committee set forth? So that's the step we're at right now.
Okay, okay. So this is a kind of broader framework we're going to prove. Do you think we would have second approval if we have the specific metrics under each core area or we don't need to do that? Because I thought.
To be developed.
Okay. I, I thought that would be, we, we need to have the committee input for that, those metrics, you know? We, we cannot say these are metrics we agree upon. Ideally, we like to hear.
Pull the community on Ping about weighting different metrics. We're gonna, we're gonna put all of the evidence there. So whatever you say the plan is going to be, we will develop metrics that show you we're meeting those.
When, when school committee members?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, if that's the case, um, I, I just want to make everybody know, including myself, when we prove something strategic plan, we have something tease in, in them rather than it's, it's all aspirational, you know, it's, it's, it's good framework, it's nice, you know, um, a, a more interesting probably substance of what kind of things we're, we're going to accomplish within five years.
The, the, the evidence of outcome is really step two in this process.
Okay. Uh, uh, I think I, I'm, I'm now.
Okay. Any other uh, discussion on the motion on the floor? Nope, we don't have to. I think we're good. Seeing none? All right, let's take a vote. I'm sorry? Yes, uh, it was moved by Tamika, second by Rajiv. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four. Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven? It is absent and Mayor is approved, eight zero one absent. Okay. Let's move to our final um, discussion item tonight, which is the superintendent evaluation. Everyone has submitted their uh, their uh, individual evaluations. Thank you very much. Emily has undertaken the task of aggregating all the data and uh, incorporating hopefully everyone's viewpoints into one integrated evaluation. So I will let Emily take it from here.
Um, so first and foremost, uh, for the members, but also for a member of the public, all of these uh, evaluations, including the individual evaluations that were made by individual members, uh, are available and publicly available in our meeting materials um, for this particular meeting. It says the, it's the um, summative evaluation report for the superintendent, but it's eighty-two pages long because it includes everybody's, the, the summative one, which we are uh, going to be talking about and hopefully voting on. Is that for tonight or that's from the next meeting? Depending on whether or not we get feedback, it's fine. So the one that we'll be, be voting on is the one that's in the front and then everything else behind it is the individual members um, evaluations. So just quickly, um, I tried my best to incorporate as many opinions as I possibly could. Some of them ran counter to each other, which is fine and as it should be, and that's normal in these situations. And also I got a question about um, uh, how I did the actual um, proficient met, uh, those sorts of things, um, where we checked the boxes. And so I did an average across all eight of us, uh, and if it was a point five, I rounded up. So if it was three point five, it, it was rounded up to a point four. That's what I did because there's no in-between. I can't do a three point seven five. Desi won't let me do that. So tonight really is really about getting feedback. If there's any um, comments or changes or things um, that, that you would like to say about the summative report, please speak now.
Okay. Any comments? And there is no need to reiterate simply what you've.
I have one quick.
Yes, go ahead.
So um, I accidentally put portion of a graduate as opposed to portion of a learner. I will change that for the final reports that goes to Desi. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. No, no need to, you know, reiterate every detail of everything you said. It's all on paper. I'll say Emily, I, Emily did all the work here. Thank you very much for that. I think you did a really solid job of capturing, just going through each individual thing. I think, I think you really captured all the, the various viewpoints, the positives, the areas of improvement. I, I don't have anything to uh, to, to add to that. Paul?
Thank you, Chris. First, thank you, Emily, for the work you did on this, which was artful and thorough and as, as well done as, as I could imagine as possible. And, and it was really, really a terrific job. I just also want to say for the sake of the public, you, you didn't mention this, that this rubric that we use is actually prescribed by the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so when people look through the form and they say, what is this and why is it? It's because we are required to, to use it. I just want to say in, in summary, that I, I was struck in reading everybody else's evaluations and rereading my own. And, and again, for the public, please understand that when we fill out our individual ones, we do not have access to what the other members of the school committee are submitting. I was struck by the areas where there was strong consensus in terms of the accomplishments of, of our superintendent and carrying out some very, very important initiatives um, over the last year. But I was also struck by the thoughtful differing individual emphases in, in the forms and was pleased to see that because it was indicative that there's, there's not group think going on here among the members of the school committee. There are thoughtful individual assessments, different points of view and, and that people felt comfortable putting those in writing. And in my mind, that's the way a board like this should be working. That as a governing body, we're supposed to bring our individual experience and expertise and judgment to bear uh, on this very important topic of evaluating our superintendent. So I, 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 I think, I think the, the process worked well. And again, want to thank you, Emily, for consolidating what we all did into a document that I, I think is an excellent reflection of the overall perspective of our school committee. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Rajiv, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Emily. I, I did, like Paul, read through everyone's comments and feedback and you know, fully acknowledge that some of us are tougher graders than others. And acknowledge to Dr. Nolan that this is just a very odd process.
Thank you for saying that.
I have, I have never in my professional life, until coming to the school committee, had to, to provide feedback in such a public forum. It's, it's hard sometimes to calibrate that, that feedback.
Yeah.
Right? So um, I think where we landed is a good place. So I, I appreciate that. I do know that there are still a couple of presentations coming up. So if we, if for our individual responses, if anything needs to be adjusted based on those, which I hope it won't have to be because I think we've heard on, we've heard about this topic before. Emily, we will, I, I will, we'll get them back to you with, you know, uh, changes being tracked or, or some other way to make it easier. But thank you.
Anping?
First of all. First of all, is this a kind of final official or still working document?
So the point of this evening is to get feedbacks and to make changes. There are strong feelings about changing what's in the summative. And also, as Rajiv just mentioned, if there is a report that comes through or something changes or something that was in process then becomes completed, the superintendent will share that information with us and we will have the opportunity to update our individual evaluations, which may affect the broader evaluation. But I promise, actually, that's a good question because our next meeting is our last meeting before it's due.
Yep.
But I know it's not before July first.
Right.
So.
Put out information for meetings at the end of June for the PTO reasons, but this is a subsidiary reason if you want to make revisions.
I, you guys received my email, right? I sent, you know, apologize being late. And the second point, Emily Emily already noted that the project, the profile of graduate and then later we changed to profile of a learner, which is very meaningful change. Uh, so this was corrected. That that's, that's nice. But I have a bigger uh point that I make. Oh, by the way, I I do want to acknowledge this is a huge task to synthesize, to summarize, you know, nine members is is a huge task. And and as as Paul mentioned, that they're different perspective. I think everybody would acknowledge that, which I agree is healthy because everybody's perspective might be different. It would be miracle if everybody's perspective happened to be same and that happened in some culture, but not here. So um, um, you know, I might have a little bit benefit of being on this committee for this eighth year. And um, I think this is well done. And as Maffa matched most of my uh assessment, I'm happy to see that. But one point I I want to be straightforward and frank. And I I I felt that quote is a little bit out of place here. And that's the um, overall uh, 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 comments. And the second, but the last paragraph, um, I I want to mention that to see if we get some kind of uh, 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 agreement on that. The members mentioned some areas for improvement, including better communication and collaboration with CPAC, LPAC and other partner organizations. Consistency of communication cross buildings and better info, information sharing about special education. Summer members also mentioned here, Doc Nolan can quote, shoot from the hip, quote, too often leading to misunderstandings. It struck me a little bit here um, because we all acknowledged Doc Nolan being very proactive during the um, the override campaign, during the teacher's strike. And that was, to me, it's striking contrast with past administration. Uh, I heard some comments, yes, uh, mixed comments. But I saw the overall, overall reaction is people were really impressed. People were really um, show the administration appreciation of 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 and Nolan being very proactive. And I thought that was overall is this is strength. This is something we most people admire. And um, I saw this quotation specifically is out of place here. And that probably defeat our overall rating for the um, on page five of the seven, district improvement goal for optimize district planning and budgeting ecosystem. I thought because um, and tremendous work and proactive communication. And I think educate a lot of people in community, leaders, specifically city councils and um, it being willing to go front to to talk to people. This is not easy task. And I thought this overall, of course, when you, when you speak so much, you know, certain choice of words could be not very appropriate. You know, we are all emotional human beings. And sometime when you got into that kind of argument or discussion, you cannot make sure that you choose the right word and or right sentences. And certainly, I'm one of them. So but put this quotation here. That defeat of overall exemplary rating for that. You know, again, I thought other things, you know, I I I almost all agree. Very well done. So I just want to point this, this is not a minor issue. To me, this is a very, very significant um, perspective, whether we're representative or the committee members. I cannot say that. I I I, you know, I, but I like to mention and to see if we have a little bit discussion here.
Anping, if I may, that was my comment, um, that Dr. Nolan can at times have a tendency to shoot from the hip, uh, which I I think is is a, is a fair critical assessment that does not in in my mind in any way defeat what is in exemplary uh, communications that had taken place here. They're not, you you can, you can be very strong in some forms of communication and not others. You can be in overall very strong communication, but there's still, uh, you know, a specific area of improvement. Uh, and I believe my comment in the assessment, which was actually something I said last year as well, was that if, you know, maybe having too quick of a response is the price we pay for the level of transparency we're getting, I am perfectly happy with with that, you know, that area of improvement. But it doesn't mean I shouldn't point it out nonetheless if I think it is an area of improvement.
I also just want to quickly say that um, I I tried very hard to get as many opinions as possible. And um, and when writing this summative assessment, I, did I agree with everything that everyone else said? No. But it's there, I, this is who we are as as a school committee. We are allowed to disagree with each other and respectfully disagree with each other. And I think um, I I I don't think I I I do not feel comfortable removing that sentence because it was uh, said by a member and there was another thing that I didn't quote that supported a similar sentiment. So it's not just one outlier. There there was actually two people. Sorry, go ahead.
Tamika?
So um, I'm going to make a distinction between disagreeing with the substance of the expression and then disagreeing with the use of the expression itself. If that had been, the latter had been your critique, Anping, disagreeing with the phrase shoot from the hip itself as a phrase that you deemed inappropriate because of colloquial misunderstandings or uh, I don't know, loss in translation, the potential to confuse. I would, I would, I think that would be a very different reaction and I would grant you that that would be an issue. But it doesn't seem as though that was the nature of your critique for this. The nature of your critique, as I am hearing it, is to the substance of this phrase. And I think to the substance, I would agree entirely. And I'm actually kicking myself that I didn't put it in because I do feel that it's an appropriate uh, critique of our superintendent. And so um, you know, I think for that reason, it it should stand. It's not at all offensive. It doesn't devalue the overall glowing performance evaluation, in my opinion. And so I I I think that's another value of having a summative evaluation, which is you essentially see, oh, I agree with this comment that somebody else made that I myself didn't make, but it's, it holds true for me, so.
Well, quickly, let me add this since Chris also said. Granted, I probably did not know as many communications as Nolan mentioned or talked or used or spoke because you work with Nolan in that sense i- 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 in in more uh, situations where I was not where, you know, a lot of discussion. But but again, past years, uh, summary evaluation, I don't recall if we use any direct quotes. When I say past, probably I should say clearly during the past um, past administrations evaluation. So that might be changed here. Mostly a very, you know, general, a little bit vague, but mostly, you know, positive statement.
I I I actually disagree with you a little bit on that because this is not the first time that I've done this. I've done this previously. I think once with Ruth. I don't know if I did it with you, but I definitely did it once with Ruth. And it it was, I didn't, there was no direct quotations, but it was almost direct quotations um, in 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 the writing of the report. So maybe a couple of words changed, but that was it. But it was pretty much almost quoting.
Oh, I agree with you. And in that sense, we, I I don't recall direct quotation, but I remember even my statement was exact language, the sentence were used in the summary. But but anyway, that that's my view and I I, you know, that's my one view. And I I just felt this language very strong and um, begin, you know, shoot from the hip too often. And I thought this could defeat our, you know, very glowing evaluation of 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 this area.
Okay, Paul?
I just want to reiterate what I said at the start, Emily, that I thought your summary was artful, thoughtful, thorough and actually very readable and presented nicely that what it was supposed to, a summation of what all of us have said. And I also just want to say um, that um, that I I would hate for the public watching this to forget that the vast, vast majority of what was written in all of our individual assessments and in the summation was extremely, extremely positive about Dr. Nolan's performance.
Yeah, and and to that point, Paul, maybe I'll just, so so the public and for the record, the um, are assessing toward progress towards goals. Professional practice goals were met, student learning goals were met, district improvement goals were met for assessing performance on standards, instructional leadership was proficient, management and operations proficient, family, community exemplary, professional culture exemplary and proficient as defined is a rigorous expected level of performance. For the overall summary, it was exemplary beyond proficient. So I I think to that point, um, I think we uh, we have a consensus of uh, of of very high performance for Dr. Nolan for the year.
Thank you.
Right? Well, if there's no other questions or comments, this will be picked back up for next meeting when we have the full materials. If there's any changes you would like to make in the interim, please send those to Emily or send them to Lisa, I guess, as that was the process we used here. Either's fine, either's fine. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for keeping it as tight as possible, and we are adjourned.
So we can cancel Wednesday then?
There is no meeting on Wednesday. Our next meeting will be in two Mondays on the nineteenth.
Tammy Strauss had her baby. Eden, Eden Lobo is her name.